This regular meeting of the Navasota City Council is called to order on the 27th of February and council chambers let the record show all council members are present with the exception of council member Peterson. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cellphones in the silent mode and a reminder to visitors if you would please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mayor Pro Tim Holt and followed by the pledges.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, for your wisdom, and especially for your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that will affect the citizens of Navasota as well as our fantastic staff and the great friends of their great city. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, tomorrow, and in the future, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three, remarks of visitors, seen none. Move to item four, staff report. Next week's.
Mayor, Mayor's Council, I'm going to have Jennifer Rayner, the Director of Public Works, come up and give an update on all of our Capitol projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jennifer Rayner, Public Works Director. First, I'm going to start out with the Utility and Street CIP project. The engineer and the city staff will be meeting on Wednesday, March the first, to go over to review all the plans. So this will be our final plan review for this project. The bid advertisement advertising will begin on March the eighth. Then we'll award the bid on March the thirtieth, oh, excuse me, we'll do the bid opening on March the thirtieth and then we'll do the award, bid to award on April tenth. So we are moving forward pretty good with that project. In the next, I'm moving on to the physical year twenty-one and physical year twenty-two street maintenance project. This is the street maintenance that we are doing on an annual basis. This is not the CIP. Lupe, do you have the list of streets? We can post the list of streets up. Jose's not here. He's actually meeting a contractor at the moment. And so we have placed the list. We're going to be meeting with Gessenor Engineer tomorrow to go over some discrepancies on some dimensions. And then once we get that done, we're going to start with the bid advertisement on the March the eighth. Then we'll do the bid opening on March the twenty-third and then we'll hopefully we'll be able to award that bid on April the tenth. So those are the streets that we have. Do you have the map that, there's a map that was created.
And then the CIP also has some streets in that as well.
That's correct.
So Jennifer, this is 2021 and 2022?
That's correct. Yes, sir. So then moving on to the AWOS, I'm glad to announce that the AWOS is back on track. So this coming weekend, starting Friday, and through the weekend, the contractors will be in to install the AWOS. So that AWOS system will be up and going in a test mode this weekend. So and then the following week, they'll put the tower up. Even though the tower's not up fully, it's still going to be in test mode. So that will be in test mode until the FAA will come back to commission it. And that could take a couple of months or whatever their schedule was like. So that's back up and moving. We just, but we got that going finally. It will be completed with that project here pretty soon. Then we have the twenty-four fire hydrant replacements that we have the CIP for. These are replacements for twenty-four of mostly quarry, old quarry hydrants without the valve, the water valves. That's going to be a bid opening on March the sixteenth and then we'll do a bid award on March the twenty-seventh. That's a sixty-day project. Once they start on the project, that will be sixty days unless they have some alternates. They come in a little low and we have some bid alternates, then we'll add some time for them. So it's probably a sixty to a ninety day project. Okay, Hollister Gas Regulator Station, that's going to be tonight. We're going to bid the award later on tonight on item number seven. So we'll come back to that later on today. The gas looping system that is going to be looping the Pecan Lake subdivision, the west side area. We're beginning the review of the engineer professional fees. That's in, legal counsel right now is reviewing that and will, should be back to award professional fees to you guys on March the thirteenth. So once that begins, I speculate we'll start that construction in October after we do the bids and the awards and so on and so forth. So that will start in October of this year. It will be under one contract, but what we're going to do, we'll do it in two phases. So we'll do phase one will give us some relief for the Con Lakes, getting those pressures up to where they need to be. And then phase two will do the remaining part of the gas looping system and adding the gas regulator station. So that will be in phases. That will take a completion from start to finish, probably a good year. Probably complete in April of next year, completely done on that. Sidewalk project, sidewalk project is coming hopefully to a completion. They just finished the curb and gutter on the north side of the sidewalk last week, so that's finished. Then they're going to begin the pouring the concrete for that side of the sidewalk and then laying the pavers so Knight Street should be open tomorrow or Wednesday. So once they finish that, you'll also see them pouring the concrete on the south side underneath that patio. And then we'll, we'll go back, we'll have to do some rain gutter things underneath that sidewalk, but we'll get that finished as well. So that is moving okay so far, so good this week. Keep our fingers crossed on that project. Let's see. The Public Works Warehouse is completed, completely finished except for two small items. They had some dirt work that needed to be completed. We've had some rain in the past and we were kind of waiting on that. And just labeling of a electrical panel. So that's the final two items that's remaining from MBC. And then I have Jose's Department that's building a driveway from the entry of the wastewater plant to the warehouse. So it's going to be accessible for us to go in and out. So I'm thinking that we'll probably start moving in there mid-March, beginning of April in between all the workloads that Public Works carries on a daily basis. I think that's all I have on projects. Any questions?
Just a question on the sidewalk project. That does, I guess they probably have subcontractors that are doing the lighting and the benches and the handrails.
The lighting won't be completed, the lighting is, have been ordered, the light poles have been ordered, but they're on back order. You'll have different contractors for the pavers, for the handrails, and so on and so forth. That should be all.
Platter boxes too, Ron.
Yeah, planter boxes, the benches and all that.
The benches.
The one that you will not see, like she said. So also just to kind of recap that for you. So if you remember, Council, you awarded the bid for this back in the winter of 2021. Start date was supposed to be in January. I came on January, reached out to them and said, hey, can we postpone this till after Texas Birthday Bash? We met with the engineer, they relayed that information. We never heard back from KSA. So we assumed that they were okay to start the week after Texas Birthday Bash last year. Texas Birthday Bash came and went and we kept reaching out, kept reaching out, we were ghosted. No, no response back. It kind of got further into the months and then we found out, oh, they thought that we were going to go with another vendor. So they, we ended up having to file against their surety bond. So legal got involved and then we're able to get them back on track with the agreement that we would do a change order, first change order of around $26,000. That was specifically for cost inflation increases that occurred between the time period. And that was something that they agreed on and we agreed on. We also had, in the meantime, it reached back out with some of our other vendors and said, hey, can you do it for this price? They came back and said, no, if we bid this out, you're looking at over $600,000 for this project. Last year, we ended the budget around 408, that includes the $26,000. Originally was around 380 something was the original bid.
Three eighty-three.
Three eighty-three. And so the understanding was that they were supposed to start August fifteenth of last year. I think what, October is when they actually finally started doing some of it and then basically took all of December off and started back in January. Well, here we are again, right around Texas Birthday Bash. And so after a couple of times reaching back out to them, tell them, hey, work through the weekend, work through the nights, whatever you got to do to get this done without any, they just weren't showing up. We had found out that they had tried to place a lien against one of our other businesses downtown because that was the delivery location address of that, of some of the concrete. And so just a lot of issues. So we, I guess the week before last, I sent an email that Carrie kind of cringed at, I'm sure, to them to let them know, here's my expectations. It needs to be completed by Thursday of this week. And if not, then I'm going to turn Carrie on them on next Monday. And so.
I thought, I thought the email was good, by the way.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, ineffective.
Yeah. So they, they've been back on the job, working very diligently and now they didn't work over the weekend much, but like Jeff was saying, they're, they're planning to pour concrete tomorrow at eight AM. Tonight, you do have one of your other change orders and under the consent agenda was a multitude of three items that was related to the projects that we need to do a change order on. We agreed that, we told them, basically, we know this is going to get approved because Council wants this to be done, but we didn't want to use them to say, oh, well, we're just going to stop until Council approves this because we don't know if you're going to pay us. And so it's better to go on and get this project done. We'll figure out how we're going to make up the shortfall through budget in the coming months, but we got to get this done. We've got a couple of businesses on that, on those blocks there that they can't continue to suffer because, you know, they drive by, people normally park in front, they're going to park on the side. And so I'd hate for a business to come to us and say, hey, I've lost revenue on this project. But the other part is, once this is over and done, we do, we have our retainage that we get to keep and decide when we pay that. So that's when we'll look to Carrie and Carrie will look through the contract to see truly is there any other legal action that we need to take.
Then take the vantage.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, next, next item, I've asked Bobby Ork to come up and give you an update on Texas Birthday Bash. As you know, we're on the home stretch here and she's about as stressed out as it comes.
She looks pretty cool.
Yeah.
Mayor, City Council, good evening. Bobby Ork, Communications Director. Just a quick update, we're just a few days away from Texas Birthday Bash. I know we're all very excited. VIP tickets, all of them are now sold out. We've sold just over 2,000 tickets so far, which has brought us in about $55,000 worth of revenue. We are expecting a lot more tickets to be sold on the day, of course, and obviously in this last week, heading up to the gates opening. Gates open at five o'clock on Friday and one o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday. Friday night is Jeff Canada, La Fiebre and La Mafia. And Saturday, we have Peyton Howley, Jason Cassidy, Wade Hayes, Kevin Fowler, and Aaron Watson performing. We also have the Petting Zoo available, Gunfighters Shows, Kid Zone, and Food and Craft Vendors. Kids under twelve are free to attend, just a reminder there. We have additional parking at Navasota High School, so shuttle buses will be running from there throughout the day until an hour after the headliners. So be sure to, if you need parking, I know downtown fills up pretty quick, be sure to take advantage of the high school for that. We do have the new layout for Texas Birthday Bash this year. The map can be viewed on social media. It can also be viewed online at TexasBirthdayBash.com. We expanded our areas for Texas Birthday Bash this year. This is to assist with safety protocols and also to enhance with patrons viewings of the entertainment provided. Additional security has been added this year in preparation for the large crowds. Weather, we are expecting some rain on Thursday and some high winds as well, but we are preparing for that. However, Friday morning, we are expecting for it to be clear and hopefully, fingers crossed, maybe some sunshine, but Saturday is expected to be a beautiful day, so be sure to come on out. Some rules just to go over, you may bring lawn chairs to the event, come on out and enjoy the delicious food and made in Texas craft vendors. Some, some facts here, again, gates will close around 10:30 PM on the evening, bags will be checked upon entry. The last shuttle is around 10:30 PM on the, at the evening, again, last hour after the final performer. Strollers are allowed, no ice chests or coolers, no alcohol upon entry or exit, no outside food or drinks, no pets, service dogs only, no tents or canopies, no firearms. And as a reminder, skip the queues. Tickets can be purchased at TexasBirthdayBash.com. Any other questions?
It's been a repeat.
I feel like I'm watching on KBTX.
Be sure to watch it on the news. I just did an interview today with Kay Ags, so I know a lot of our local media is covering it. KBTX has a, has an interview set up with me and obviously the local radio stations around, so I'm sure you'll see a lot more coverage of us as well. But we're excited, it's going to be a good two days and excited to have all of our city staff out there working the event as well. So it's going to be a good one.
Thank you. Have nothing else, Mayor?
These Board and Commission reports from Council. I have a couple. Board of Adjustment on February second. There was a public hearing and action taken on a variance for a building that will be, are constructed at 114 Ostiana Hills, that's right next to Jurnay Office there. Will be a three-occupant small strip center and I believe from what the intent is for a couple of the office slash retail. And Planning and Zoning was on the twenty-third and there was a proposed site plan for a convenience store that in its presented form was rejected by Planning and Zoning and will be likely brought back in a different form. And just coming up here, we've got March eighth is Grimes County Day at the Capitol and we'll have city and county officials be meeting with our Senator Culcorst and Representative And the ninth of March is the Chamber Banquet at the Fairgrounds, starting at 5:30. March eleventh, Farmer's Market from nine to one at the library and also that same day, the spring cleanup from nine to four, delivered to Malcolm Street. And that's also on the twelfth from nine to four. And just, just, just for information, the type things that are going to be accepted will be mattresses, box springs, toilets, sinks, carpet, furniture, lumber, cast iron, scrap metal, stoves, refrigerators, water heaters, washers and dryers. So there's a lot of things that you can rid yourself of on that day. And just items that are not accepted will be hazardous waste, paint, corrosives, pesticides, herbicides, chemicals, cross ties, landscape, landscaping, cross ties, televisions and computer monitors. So again, that's nine to four on the eleventh and twelfth. And then just coming up down the road a bit is the fifteenth of April is the twenty-first Annual Keeping Navasota Beautiful Trash Off from eight to one at the Navasota Center where we meet up. And they need, need more teams and more individuals to sign up and we need sponsors. So contact Eric here at the city or go to the city Facebook page or website for more
Also, this is going to be the third, fourth, and fifth, it's the final weekend of the Navasota Theater Alliance's Girls Weekend. We've had some great crowd. It is a fantastic place to see if you really want something to laugh at. Saturday is going to be a matinee as well as Sunday at two o'clock. So you'll have time to attend the play and then follow up with the bash that night.
Item five is consideration and possible action on assigned variance applications submitted by Joe's Italian Restaurant and Pizza from Chapter Three Building Regulations Signs Related to Freestanding Signs.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Yozado, Development Services Director. So just to briefly summarize, Joe's Italian has applied for a sign variance. In your staff report and cover sheet, you see a photo of the sign. The construction kind of jumped the gun a bit, however, we have been working with Adi, with Joe's Italian on this process. So the sign, as far as requirements are concerned, it's, it's ten feet in height. The maximum height is six feet for that area. And then there's also a standard that there can be no more than basically a foot of clearance between the bottom of the sign and the ground as the freestanding sign. And this sign has a six foot of clearance. So it's a little bit too tall, two feet tall, and then like five, five or so feet taller off of the ground. The fact that it's built made it easy to represent it because you can see a picture of it in your consideration. Adi understands that if, you know, depending on the outcome of the meeting, he may have to change the sign or, or do something different, but he is here tonight if y'all have any questions regarding the requirements. Staff does recommend approving the variance as proposed. The site where Joe's Italian is, the parking is, is kind of tight and with the lower sign to the ground, it'll be very hard to see the sign with, with everyone parking. The speed limit is, is low, but this is just going to help with visibility. So, and again, Adi is here if y'all have any questions. I'm probably mispronouncing your name, so I'm sorry.
Was this recommended approval by the P and Z?
No, sir. So the, so the sign ordinance a number of years ago was moved out of Chapter fourteen and to Chapter three. So all sign requests are heard directly through Council now. So there is no recommendation from the board.
Just out of curiosity, the picture of the sign that's in the back, which I think is a, I'm not sure what it is, but that little blue sign that's in the back, how, is that taller than the height of the current sign that, is it taller than Joe's sign?
The blue sign.
Yeah, which I think is, is right there on the corner of, it's for that lot that's inside, it's like auto sales or something. Because it looks taller.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. Yeah, that, that is an existing, sorry, I didn't see the letter. Yeah, that is the existing sign across the street.
Yeah, it's really across the driveway, right?
Yeah, across the drive, yeah, across the drive. Yeah, there's a number of existing signs along both South La Salle and North La Salle that are above that standard, but they were in place when the sign ordinance was approved.
Yeah, and I think I agree with you that the sign being that tall certainly would help with traffic trying to get in and out because to block that, when cars are there, it is difficult to get in and out and safety would be an issue there.
I don't know if you can even see or, you had a couple of doleys parked in front of that if you can see the sign, see half of it.
I move for approval for the variance.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Fulks. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carried. Item six, consideration and possible action on variance applications submitted by Navasota Welding Supply from Chapter Three Building Regulations Signs Related to Pylon Signs.
Mayor, Council, so again, just a brief summary. This sign has not been constructed yet, although the sign company was very helpful in providing us a picture, kind of imposed on the site to see what it's going to look like. So it's kind of similar here. The maximum requirements for sign area are sixty-four square feet along the spur. The proposed sign is eighty square feet. And then the height, the maximum height is eight feet and they're proposing eighteen feet, two inches. As far as staff's recommendation, Spur 515 is a, is a truck route. There's a lot of, a lot of traffic running through there. Speed limit is, is forty-five miles an hour. So I think with the height of the sign, it being a multi-tenanted building, they do have some lease space there that'll eventually fill up that bottom portion. So just for visibility purposes and the speed limit, we feel that what they're proposing is adequate. Other signs in the area, the, the Napa, the Napa Auto Parts Store has a, has a sign that's fairly tall. It's granted a little bit closer to the highway, but I think it just, the, the sign height is complementary to, to what the speed limit is and the fact that it's our truck route. And I'm, and I'm not sure if anyone from Navasota.
Yep.
Okay, they are, David. So they're here if y'all have any questions in that regard, but, or for myself.
I think we addressed the Napa sign, I think, with the same variance, a number of years ago, but it, but for the same reasons.
Correct.
Napa sign was just outside the 400 feet.
Yeah.
And they didn't want to put it way, it was almost away from their site and we approved it to come over. But having traveled 515 all the time and especially right there at Old Montgomery Road and Old Courtney Road, I know the visibility and having something up higher would be much safer than something down low.
So I have a question.
In all that consideration, I move that we approve the variance.
Can I ask a question? My understanding is that this is basically two different signs. So you'll have welding supply on the top and then the bottom section, which we see is white, would be for a tenant.
Yes.
So it'd be like two different businesses on it.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's why they're, it's considered a pylon sign. That's what our ordinance labels a multi-tenant sign.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Fulks to approve.
I'd like to make a comment on this. If you're, if you're heading east on Spur 515, the road jogs and that comes up just on the, on the backside of the jog, as it were, so that until you straighten out, you don't even see that there. So anything we can do to improve the, the visibility of that is going to help.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item seven is consideration and possible action to award contract for the Hollister Street Regulator Station replacement project. Street Regulator Station Replacement Project to LDC LLC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, Jennifer Raina, Public Works Director. On the sixteenth of February, uh, one bid was received from LDC LLC of Montgomery, uh, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three, eight fifteen for the Hollister Gas Regulator Station to be, um, replaced. Um, the, the amount was budgeted for three hundred and fifteen thousand. It came in just a little over, um, one hundred and forty-one thousand, just under the, under the budget, um, that we proposed.
Like that.
Yes, sir. So this, uh, with only one, um, contractor, uh, this contractor has done two other projects with Strand Engineer, um, so they are recommended. Yes, sir. Do you have any questions?
Any idea why it was so much more, so far below what we estimated the cost was?
Um, they did look at everything and they were, um, they didn't have any discrepancies or anything like that. Everything was on point. Um, they double-checked everything. They did wanna give us a heads up that it did come in really low, but everything is, is okay. I don't, I don't have an answer for that, I don't know why. I don't know.
Great, yeah.
This is sixty percent of the estimate.
And the estimate could've been higher already.
Yeah, yeah.
After you end costing.
We always want to es- you know, estimate higher.
They could've, you could've gone a little more on the extreme to make, you know, trying to, knowing kinda with the way the economy was headed and things like that.
I'll move to award the contract for the Hollister Street Regulator Station Replacement Project to LDC LLC in the amount of one seventy-three, eight one five. Second. Motion by Mr. Fulks, second by Mr. Gussner to approve the replacement of the Hollister Street Regulator Station, the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Maybe they need some welding supplies while they're here, so.
And they'll be hungry.
Item eight's the consent agenda, which consists of the second reading of ordinance ten sixteen dash twenty-three authorizing participation by other intrigee service area cities in matters concerning intrigee Texasings at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in twenty twenty-three, authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas. The second reading of ordinance ten seventeen dash twenty-three approving an annexation request submitted by James C. Hassel for one point three one oh acre tract of land in the James Whiteside Survey, A sixty-two, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas. And third, to approve a change order, number two, on the West Washington Avenue project just mentioned, uh, earlier by Mr. Weeks with the Eighth Street to Tenth Street Street Revitalization Program in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, oh four six and fifty-four cents to Green Dream International LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gussner and second by Mr. Fulks to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item nine, city council shall meet in executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with attorney, consultation with legal counsel regarding the city of Navasota Water and Sewer Utility Service Areas and associated matters in the time of six thirty-four. Item ten will reconvene at seven oh four PM. Item eleven, consideration and possible action on city of Navasota Water and Sewer Utility Service Areas, including but not limited to retaining legal counsel regarding city of Navasota Water and Sewer Utility Service Areas and associated matters.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city of Navasota return, retain Mike Gershman and the Lloyd Goslick Law Firm to represent and provide legal counsel to the city regarding its water and wastewater service area, including but not limited to matters involving G and W Water Supply Corporation. And I further move to approve the proposed engagement agreement with the Lloyd Goslick Law Firm and authorize the mayor to execute any necessary documentation.
Second. Motion by, uh, Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Fulks to approve the item as described in the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. That being the last item, we adjourn.